All right, we will call this meeting to order. Good evening, City of Conway. Good evening, Commissioners and Planning Staff. My name is Brandon Rule, Chairman. We'll start with a roll call to order and a roll call. Mr. Commissioner Ingram, Mr. Bell, Ms. Venture, Mr. Gaynor is at a work event, Ms. Sanders Jones, Ms. King, Mr. Webb is out this evening, and Ms. Williams. All right, we have a quorum. So we have nine items on this agenda this evening. The first two are going to be subdivision review meetings. Before that, we will look at our approval of our minutes from our October meeting. Let's see, that was the 18th, 2021. Commissioners, any corrections?
No corrections, but I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the October meeting.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, or motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those minutes are approved. Now moving into our subdivision items, the first one of which is a request for preliminary plat approval of South Sterling subdivision Phase Two.
Good evening. I'll be down here doing all the reports tonight. So you'll get to see this side of me, right? This is South Sterling Phase Two PUD. If you're familiar, on South Donaghy Sterling Drive, there's another small subdivision that has been developed out there. This is a 16 lot subdivision, which will have lots ranging in size from .11 acres to .15 acres, which is consistent with the requirements for the PUD development. It will access off of Moody Gardens, which is there to the northeast corner of the property, which is Phase One of this development as well. All the lots will front onto that extension of Moody Gardens with lots 27, 28, and 36 being unbuildable due to drainage improvements and a hammerhead turnaround. Lots 27 and 28 will have the temporary turnaround placed in it. As a result, it will essentially make those lots unbuildable for a time. Should they be able to punch this out to South Donaghy in the future, that easement on those portions of that where the hammerhead is could be vacated, and those could be turned into buildable lots in the future. This will have a 50-foot right-of-way with five-foot sidewalks with a six-and-a-half-foot green space. Based on its consistency with the comprehensive plan, it was consistent with at least three goals: providing opportunities for a variety of housing choices, both suitable and affordable situated throughout the city; protect established residential areas from encroachment of incompatible uses; and provide a high standard of development and redevelopment of residential areas; and provide a logical pattern of land uses throughout the community incorporating an efficient relationship between transportation, public services, residential, commercial, industrial, and business areas. So based on those elements, Planning Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat contingent upon the completion of the amended punch list and the associated conditions of approval. So, any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Again, this is not a public hearing item. All right. Well, we like to hear from the applicant or the owner if they have anything to add.
I don't really have anything to add.
Sure, if you will state your name and address for the record.
Richie Hambiken, 86, Richland Hills, Conway. Yeah, me and my brother wanted to do this. Phase One went real well, and just trying to go with Phase Two.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Hambiken? Thank you, sir. Any opposition to this request? All right, we'll bring it back into commission. Any more thoughts?
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passes unanimously. Moving to our second subdivision item. This is a request for preliminary plat approval of Bell Valley subdivision Phase Three. Mr. Walden?
Yes, this is located approximately 100 feet southeast of the intersection of Bill Bell Lane and South German Lane. The applicant is, Mr. Frank Shaw, is requesting preliminary plat approval of a 21-lot subdivision. It will be, represents Phase Three of Bell Valley subdivision. You'll be seeing several other phases of this in the future. The buildable lots range in size from .15 acres to almost a third of an acre, consistent with the requirements for R1 zoning. It will access off of, access off of Bill Bell Lane. The two lots, the lots will front off the internal streets. There would be one that comes directly off, and then one that is perpendicular to that. Lots One and 21 fronting Bill Bell Lane will access off of those internal lots as well. All the lots will have proposed sidewalks. Based on this, it was, the development is consistent with the three goals I stated previously on the other item with the comprehensive plan. So based on that, Planning Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat contingent upon the completion of the amended punch list and the associated conditions of approval. Any questions?
Pretty straightforward. Commissioners, any questions? Now, you said lots One and 21 that front Bill Bell Lane would be accessible from the interior of the development.
Yes, essentially, there will be, you'll see that Lot One there will gain access. It has direct frontage on Street A. Lot 21 and 20, essentially, there'll be, there's a shared access agreement that goes between those lots over to Lot 19. So, be a shared driveway.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Shaw, do you have anything to add?
Just a bit. Thank you. Thank you. We're, this will be Phase Three of Bell Valley, and we're doing one street at a time is our new method of operation. So, the next phase will be due north of this, then another phase due north of that, and so we will be building from south to north. The property south of it, fate of it is as yet undecided. Phase One has 13 lots, has sold and closed, and there are 13 houses going up, foundations in, and we expect to close on the other 30 lots before the end of the year and get houses started there. So, the property's moving very well, quite a few are sold. So, there is a mutual access agreement on 19, 20, and 21, and if there, if there are not any other questions, that's all I have.
Good. Commissioners?
I'm at to approve.
Okay. Got a motion? All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yeah, there's corrections there needed on the plat, which I assume will be done, and those conditions are boilerplate. So, yes, for the record.
Move to approve with conditions and corrections.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you, Mr. Shaw. All right, now we will move into our public hearing, and I'll have to say, the Conway Planning Commission makes recommendations to the City Council on these public hearing items. The items that are being reviewed on the agenda this evening will be considered by the City Council on November 23rd. Items not approved by the Planning Commission this evening may be appealed to the City Council within 30 days of the date of Planning Commission denial, with the exception of any decisions that are made by the Planning Commission acting as the Board of Zoning Adjustment. I'll also state that to kind of, in essence of time, so we're not here all night, we'd ask that for each person to speak in favor of this request, elect your representative to come up to speak for the first 10 minutes, and then every subsequent person in favor of that request, two minutes, and then likewise for the opposition, if you could elect one representative to come up and speak for the first 10, and then subsequently two after that, that would be greatly appreciated. So, with that, our first public hearing item this evening is a request to modify a conditional use permit number 1398 for 7.61 acres located at 1301 Sunset Drive. Mr. Walden's going to walk us through this.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify, three.
Three minutes.
Ballast, ballast.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, we, I know we've got a lot of folks interested in this, this particular case.
Yes.
If this case looks familiar to you all, it is because it is. You reviewed it last May of last year. This is Lot Two of the Walmart Baker subdivision, so this is the lot behind the neighborhood Walmart. So, at the end of Ferris, this is proposed access from Sunset Drive. This was previously approved as a conditional use permit. Part of that, part of the, one of the sort of aspects of it, what was previously proposed, was to have access off of the end of Ferris Road, which is in the loading area from Walmart, and additionally have access from Sunset Drive. Months, months, and months of discussions with Walmarts, the city working with the applicant again as well to work on that. Essentially, Walmart declined to provide access, so based on interference with their, with their truck loading at the site, based on that, the applicant was advised to reapply for a conditional use permit, given the significance of the difference between sort of the impact of the use based on it accessing off Ferris versus accessing off Sunset Drive. So, that's why it's, that's why it's here tonight. Looking at the zoning, the sites zoned R1. The requested conditional use is for a religious facility. On the comprehensive plan, it indicates for the property be used for single-family use, which religious facility is a applicable type use in this location. Looking at traffic impact, the assumptions we made on traffic impact are that this would be a 21,000-square-foot religious facility or church. That is based on the site plan, that the conceptual site plan that the applicant provided. In looking at traffic generation, it would generate approximately 63 vehicle trips per a typical, typical weekday, and then about approximately 283 vehicle trips per typical Sunday. That is on a basis, I think, of a, the applicant can speak to the capacity, but potentially four to 500 capacity, maybe 600 capacity, I'm not sure. That would have the applicant clarify that. In terms of portions of the site, rest within the floodway and floodplain, which they're not utilizing, those portions of the site, that's the area towards, kind of towards the north that is largely indicated as green area. You'll notice on the, on the site plan, the revised site plan. There are no current improvement plans for Ferris Road at this time. Connecting Sunset Drive to Ferris Road was investigated or intended, but it was determined that the connection was not supported by adjacent property owners and would require eminent domain, so that's something the city is not currently exploring or looking at. Looking at the comments for this, under review of conditional uses, staff considers the provisions of Section 901.2, Paragraph J, in the code, so that provides our, sort of, kind of our basis for the items that we review when we look at this. The applicant intends to construct a 21,000-square-foot church. The use is not allowed by right, but it is allowed as a conditional use in R1 zone. Again, with its access off of Sunset Drive, it would place all traffic entering and leaving the site onto Sunset Drive or Meadow Drive. That has resulted in, I think, considerable concern regarding the traffic impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Looking, you know, in terms of the site, although it's designated as a single family, due to the existing flood constraints, the site's proximity to intense commercial, traditional R1 development is probably not likely. Though the site could support more dense or cluster development style single family. So, if you were to build exactly like the neighborhood to the north, that's probably very unlikely, but something slightly more dense is probably possible on the site. The institutional use would provide an appropriate transition from the intense commercial use to the south to the single family to the north and east. However, given the site's access and location at the dead end of a street in the very back end of a neighborhood, that is something that is concerning. If approved, the development would be subject to the provisions of Section 1101 of the zoning code for developer view. So, based on that review, staff recommends denial of the conditional use permit on the following basis: while the use itself is compatible with the surrounding area, the use is accessed via Sunset Drive, given the scale of its, the development, it being a 21,000-square-foot facility, would negatively impact the adjacent neighborhood. As such, these impacts make the proposed use incompatible to the surrounding area in a manner that would harm the general welfare of the neighborhood. Thus, the use is not consistent with the standards of Items One and Two of Paragraph J in Section 901.2 of the zoning code. We do have, if the Planning Commission does choose alternatively to approve the item, we do have the conditions listed previously that are the, were subject to the previous approval on the conditional use permit. So, any questions?
Does not look so. Thank you. All right, we have the applicant or the applicant's agent to speak in favor of this request.
I represent one church in the Baker family, but I'm going to yield my time to Pastor Paul Hudson.
Okay.
And let him take the big time, and I'll wrap up.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commission.
Good evening.
I'm a pastor, and I'm used to, if I have to cut something out of a sermon, I can pick it up the next week, but due to the gravity of this, I realize I got one shot. So, I wrote it down. Please do not take that as it means less. I just want to make the best use of our time.
Sure, thank you.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Paul Hudson, and I reside at 2440 Little Creek Drive in Conway. I want to thank you for your time, your effort, your service to our community, and your consideration to our request to modify our previously approved conditional use permit. We believe that after hearing our heart and the facts, you will be inclined to grant us again the conditional use permit. My wife and I moved here 21 years ago. For 10 years, I faithfully served as a pastor at Second Baptist Church. To this day, I love that church and those people, and appreciate what they do in our community. 11 years ago, though, Christie and I felt God calling us to start a church, not because somebody else couldn't do it right, not because we knew something someone else didn't, not because this is where our biological family is, not even because this is where we had the biggest financial support. No, we knew God had called us to start a church in Conway because we love people. Since the day of one church's inception, we focused every bit of our ministry at Gatlin Park. We have spent hundreds of hours as a church, and thousands of dollars as a church, loving on that community, doing our very best to share the gospel. And I want to be extremely clear with you what I mean when I say the gospel. This is what I mean, that Jesus Christ is not a fairy tale nor a fable. He is the only begotten Son of a God. He was born of a virgin, lived a perfect life and died on a cross, and three days later he arose. He did this to pay the penalty for my sin and yours, to give us real life and eternal life. Romans 10 says that if we confess with our mouth that Jesus is Lord and believe in our hearts that God had raised him from the dead, you will be saved. And this gospel transforms lives. It transformed my life. It gives us purpose and brings hope. Again, the Apostle Paul said in Romans 15, "May the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace believing, so that by the power of the Holy Spirit you may abound in hope." We desire that all people find joy, peace, and hope in Jesus. Two years ago, when our church decided that this would be best in our interest to have a place, we began looking for a piece of property. And when this piece of property came up that touches Gatlin Park, it became the most obvious and the best choice for us. In September, after all of that other stuff, in September, upon the direction of Planning Staff, we met with the Conway Fire Marshal's Office, showed them our revised site plan, and walked through the details. They have verbally expressed that our proposed Sunset satisfies all fire code requirements. The Commission staff has denied recommending our request based upon Conway zoning code 901.2, Paragraph J, Item One and Two. I would like to address them individually. Number one, Item One says the proposed use shall be designated, located, and operated so that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. Number one, if one applies this generally, then we would never have any more houses, any more stores, any more streets, or any more apartment complexes in Conway. Number two, according to the Fire Marshal's Office, this is not unsafe, and this does meet all of required code requirements for fire access and for entrance. If traffic volume is a concern, then putting a church there, like one church, that would use it one day on Sunday morning and Wednesday evening would be a much better fit than putting in houses that would use it 24/7. Under Bullet Six, number two is the proposed land use shall be compatible with other area properties. Under Bullet Six and other places, staff recommendations have even stated, and I quote, "The proposed institutional use would provide an appropriate transition from intense commercial to the south, to single-family residential to the north and east." In regard to projected traffic impact on Page 13, that we feel is grossly overstated. I personally looked up how the ITE, how they manage that, and I'm not sure where they got the data. I extremely appreciate all the work they have done. I, please don't, any passion that I have, please see that as passion and not anger. This is just one of the most important things to me, right? As I looked at it, I don't know what data they used, but Adam Treese will speak to, it is grossly exaggerated, the traffic that we would put in there, but I'll let him approach that. The City Planning Department shows that there were nine public comments that were put in there. By law, we mailed out 30 letters to property owners that touched within 300 feet of that property. Of those nine, Jamie Percoro of 1326 Sunset Drive stated, "This will be a much safer option for herself and her children to travel to the walking trail into Walmart. She does not think the church would generate that much added traffic." She does not think the church would generate that much added traffic, but would like to see traffic calming devices, signs installed, installed for safety." We agree. That leaves eight comments, of which two said they didn't like traffic coming through because they didn't want it to connect to Walmart. Um, and that they wanted us to put walkways in that would c- connect to Tucker Creek. We are. If you look at the site plan, we are giving an easement to the city of Conway to do a free walking to, to connect Tucker Creek all the way across. And if you look at the site plan, which Mr. Treese will refer to, even the new Pompey Park puts it that it would be right there at our, at wa- at our easement. That leaves eight comments, two of which said they didn't like the traffic, they'd connect. So, of the nine, actually, three are in favor of it. Of the remaining six comments, two are a husband and wife of the same household, meaning at this point, and I know that there are others here this evening, but at this point, there's, uh, five residences against our proposal out of a neighborhood of eighty-four homes. That is a six percent of people. I'm not stating that the other seventy-nine people would be in favor of it, but I'm also not saying that the other seventy-nine are against it either. Because I wish to honor and respect these people, and I mean that with greatest, I mean that, that I mean to honor and respect these people, I would like, who have submitted comments against us, to not broadly paint over their opinions, I would like to quickly address each person's comments. James Locke of thirteen sixteen Sunset Drive believes that access through Ferris Road would be better. We agreed. We actually, if, if, if that had been possible, we wouldn't be having this conversation. But since Walmart has challenged us by stating that we have six floors of attorneys that will hold you up for years, we are left with this option. Or for the city to eminent domain. Eddie Endorse Morris of twenty-four twenty Meadow Drive. I know Eddie Endorse. They're friends. Um, Eddie and I served together at Second Baptist for the ten years that I was there. We attended Second Baptist together and even served together at the same time. They are good people, but I'm afraid that they're misguided and have wrong information and have, and have built faulty pre- presuppositions. Eddie's comments seem to center around that One Church is just like Second Baptist. Actually, at the time that Eddie and I served together, Second was over three times as big as what we are or what we even propose to be, both in number of people and space in building. And they were on half as much land. Eddie has concerns that the roads are already close to needing repair. My opinion is, that's great. Let's, let us go in there and build a church, then we can all redo the road. Eddie makes three comments about that there's a single entry. Really, to me, that is a question that is answered in the fact that the Conway Fire Marshal's Office have given us verbal approval, that they will approve if passed to them, that this meets all of the fire code requirements. Eddie expresses concern that you should deny this because Walmart denied us. This is apples and oranges. Walmart denied us because they don't want any traffic back there. It's not a traffic flow, they just like control. Eddie says that if we do church like Second did, we would have lots of traffic there day and night, all the time. And he's told the community that, and he's right. If we did church like Second Baptist did ten years ago. Ten years ago, when I was there, or eleven, twelve years ago, it was a program-driven church with a school, a daycare, a mother's day out program, as well as other ministries using the facilities all the time at all hours of the day and night. But that is not who we are as One Church, and that is not what we do. We're a relationship-driven church. We mainly, the only scheduled events that we have are on Sunday morning and Wednesday night. We do the other things that churches do, funerals, weddings, take care of people. But the only scheduled events we have are Sunday morning and Wednesday night. Clinton Bart, uh, Clinton Karen Bart, thirteen nineteen Sunset said, "We love One Church, and this has nothing to do with their construction." She goes on to express concern about traffic, saying, "We have enough issues with people not obeying the speed laws." My opinion is, that sounds like a problem with current neighbors and not me. Norma Smothers of twenty-four nineteen Meadows Drive essentially doesn't think that this is enough land. Respectfully, I would tell her, how much time do I have?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Anyone else to speak in favor of this request?
My name is Gene Shambles. I reside at four seventy-six Ackland Gap Road in Conway. I am an elder at One Church. Uh, basically, I'm going to finish what he was, wasn't able to finish here. So, I'm going to just basically read exactly what he has on paper. It says, Norma Smothers of twenty-four nineteen Meadows Drive essentially doesn't think there's enough land. Respectfully, we don't think that she knows that, uh, what it takes to do the church, what we have proposed. There's plenty of land there. Uh, she additionally mentions that there's problems with football and baseball parking, and we just want to make you realize that we would not be doing church at the same time they're having baseball and football games. Uh, Statler Strange of thirteen oh seven Sunset Drive, and actually, I don't think he resides there, but this is a rental house for him, but to address his point, he says, "A church has no business being in the middle of a neighborhood, and commercial zoning would be better suited." Well, we like to disagree with his opinion, and so would about six or seven other churches in Conway. They're located in the middle of neighborhoods. And that, we want to remind that even you guys have approved that the planning department said this would be a very appropriate use for the land on our additional, our permit from last year. Lastly, we want to share with you the comments from two people who would be our closest neighbor, Mrs. Fisher and Mr. Newell. Marie Fisher of twenty-four twenty-three Meadow Drive has no opposition to there being a church there, but does not want to cut through and expresses fear that it would be used as a parking lot for walkers of Tucker Tree, Tucker Creek. We are here because there will not be a cut through to Walmart, and the city is already providing more parking, uh, for our park and trail areas by what you guys are planning already for Pompos Park. Aaron Newell of thirteen oh three Sunset Drive is concerned about leaving green space. We agree, and not only will we leave as much as possible, but we will plant more trees. But Mr. Newell's last comment is of great effect. He says, "If the city or church was willing to build a small walkway from the ch- parking lot to the church proposed to Tucker Creek Trail, we would support the construction, as that would be a benefit to us be able to walk from the trail to their home." That's already in the proposed to build the trail. "We admit that traffic will increase, but there is also a significant increase in benefit and value to the community, both in how we better serve the area, the schools, and our closest neighbors. We would like to submit to you a ten-page summary document entitled, "Some Positive Benefits Churches Bring to Communities." It has slightly over three pages of cited studies, statistics, journal articles, and peer views from organizations and universities all over the U.S. The conclusion of this paper is, "Churches Promote Outcomes That Improve Government Stability and Economic Growth." Lastly, we'd like to thank you guys. We do not envy your job or responsibility. With understanding that we already had approval, and insomuch as we have sought to address the staff's current concerns, and that we have respectfully addressed the neighbors' concerns, and because that we meet all city code and Fire Marshal requirements, we want to thank you in advance for your approval, as One Church looks forward to loving Conway and our Gatlin Park community even better."
Thank you. Good timing. The next person to speak in favor of this request, come on down.
Thank you, Planning Commission. Uh, my name's Adam Treese. Um, I reside in, uh, Greenbrier. I'm a member of One Church, and, uh, actually, uh, before I attended One Church, my very first, uh, meeting with One Church was at City in the Dark at Gatlin Park. So, I'd actually met a lot of these people before, uh, I've re- actually came to the, uh, One Church location on Front Street. So, um, I'd, uh, I would like to speak a little bit about, kind of what, uh, not to reiterate anything that they've said, but, uh, the, the initial site drawings we had was to have the through street. Uh, as, as they've said, Walmart, um, was opposed to that. We only have one other opposition, uh, at that time, and that was, uh, the, uh, one of the, one of the s- same ones that had opposition this time, if it was a through street. So, now that it's not a through street, um, uh, the only two opposition we would have had before would have been eliminated, uh, based on having one drive. Uh, we do have some more this time. To address kind of the, the traffic flow, and I, I'm not, I, I really don't understand exactly how, uh, the two hundred and eighty-three, um, vehicular, uh, count would, uh, be on a Sunday morning. I, I don't know how that was derived. I know that, uh, right now, we currently use less than a hundred spaces on a average Sunday. Um, our, our average attendance is two hundred and thirty on an average Sunday. Um, and to, to try to meet, uh, you know, growth there, uh, we've requested for occupancy of six hundred. I think Mr. Walden had, had mentioned it was five or six hundred. We have requested, uh, uh, occupancy of six hundred there, which would require fi- a hundred and fifty, uh, parking spaces, six of those being handicapped. Uh, what we have drawn on the current drawing, uh, would allow for a hundred and sixty total, so we're just ten above with two extra, uh, handicapped, uh, spaces there. So, that would be to meet maximum capacity. Um, as he's, as Paul stated, uh, meeting with the city, uh, essentially, we created a hammerhead turn, um, since we didn't have a through street now, uh, after meeting with the Fire Marshal's Office, which is very similar to the, the hammerhead turnaround you see in a lot of the residential developments now. Uh, we, we are compared a lot to other, other churches. Um, as far as size, I, I think you'll see we cover less area, uh, percentage-wise than, than many of those. Um, to jump to another, uh, point, as far as traffic within the neighborhood, uh, currently, for the last eleven years, we've, we've done City in the Dark and other events, um, in the neighborhood just north of this, that's, you know, very comparable to this. There are only forty parking spaces between that, off of Tyler and, uh, uh, off the end of Broadview, and we have a hundred and fifty, uh, volunteers show up from the church, and we've had over three thousand attendees, and we've never had one complaint or one incident. So, thank you.
Thank you, Adam. The next individual who would like to speak in favor of this request, please come on down.
Hi, I'm Larry White. I live at thirty-one ten Baxter Drive in Conway. I'm also the pastor at Woodland Heights Baptist Church on the corner of Prince and, uh, Hogan Street in Conway. Uh, back in two thousand nine, I was the director of missions for, uh, Faulkner Baptist Association. It was thirty-five churches in, in our city and county. And we started a, a after-school club in Gatlin Park. We tried to find a church to connect with that after-school club. College students, UCA, were conducting that. We couldn't find a local church. There's not one on Tyler Street. There's not, there, there is a church, uh, obviously, next to this, uh, next to the high school, but there wasn't one of our brand that was willing to do that. And so, uh, when I met Paul Hudson, we started talking about, hey, where could you, where could you do church? And I proposed to them that they find a location as qu- as close to Gatlin Park as they possibly could. And that, at the time, was the location they'd been on Front Street for about ten years. Ever since, as, as Adam just stated, they have been there, uh, every year. They've been there doing numerous things. They've been in the neighborhood. They've done a lot of ministry, helping people, and they've been great neighbors on, uh, on Front Street. Uh, they are welcomed by the other churches in our community. Um, they are well-received, and I think they would be great neighbors in this community, and I think it's a, would be a beautiful addition to that part of our town. Thank you.
Next person to like to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Diane Henson, and I live at thirteen Blue Jay Way. I've been a resident of Conway since nineteen seventy-three. I've been a teacher in the Conway School Systems for thirty-two years, teaching for thirty-six years. UCA and Hendrix are included in those years. Um, I served on Conway's Board of Transportation for several years. As serving on the board for Big Brothers and Big Sisters, I've worked closely with Choosing to Excel and Thelma Moten. I've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a graduate of the Faulkner County Leadership Institute. I don't know if y'all know that, now they've changed the name, but anyway. My husband, Robert, and I have owned a real estate company in Conway for ten years. I am still a practicing Realtor. I'm also a member of One Church, and close to, uh, being a member of it, close to the beginning of it opened up. We joined One Church because of the leadership of Paul Hudson. I share all of this with you to let you know my connection and concern with our great city. I've had the opportunity of seeing Paul's heart for people on many mission trips that we've been on together around the world. Paul's passions are for God, his family, and for meeting people's needs here, especially in Conway, Arkansas. Showing kindness as Christ has asked us to do. With Paul's passion, he has led our church to set up missions around the world. One of our most important missions is here in Conway at Gatlin Park and Idaburn's Elementary School. And as a teacher, that means a lot to me. Um, I don't remember anyone so far complaining that, um, when we walked around the communities putting smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors in their homes. I don't remember anyone complaining when we filled up their cars with gas in that neighborhood, or when we hosted Easter egg hunts for anyone in that area, or City in the Dark Fall Festival, a community cookout with our fire department, helping with the slip and slide, and even passing out backpacks full of school supplies for any child who came by there. In fact, it seems to have lightened up the community spirits in that area. Observing what One Church has done in the park so far, I believe placing a One Church building on this property would only increase the value of the area, as well as meeting the needs of others and offering the community more services from our members. Understanding that we are facing NIMBY, we have heard the concerns that there would be traffic going to and from the church, and yes, there will be. Well, there'll be, there'll be traffic from those who are going in to help other people who are in need. And yes, we are Christians, passionate for Christ, and helping anyone who needs us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Henson. Next person who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Scott Miller. I am the current director of the Faulkner Baptist Association. We have thirty-two churches across Faulkner County, twelve of those in the city limits of Conway. Uh, all of those churches are in neighborhoods, and all of those churches are good neighbors and are assets to the communities in which they are. Uh, Gatlin Park has been, uh, the primary ministry opportunity, uh, for One Church, uh, basically since their inception. It's a, it's a neighborhood and, and a part of Conway, a community in Conway, that is sometimes neglected, uh, even by our churches, uh, but not by One Church. Um, we have seen this as a God send, that this property was available for them and to them, and, um, uh, we, we would like for them the opportunity to serve as neighbors in that community, neighbors with the community, neighbors with the city. Um, and, uh, we hope that you all will grant, uh, their request to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person to speak in favor?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Kent Baker, and, uh, I represent myself and my mom that owns the property in question. And, uh, as I was sitting back there, I kind of changed horses on what I was going to talk about. I kind of wanted to touch bases on all the positives that have came from that property that my mom has owned for over forty years. Uh, when the city of Conway was in dire need of, uh, expanding, uh, Prince Street there, they came to her and said, "We need some land to ex- expand that road." So, she gave them the land to widen the road, and they said, "Well, we want to do a roundabout at the same time, and to try to ease some of the Conway High School traffic." So, she said, "Well, how about I just give you the land to extend Ferris Road?" So, she gave the city the land to extend Ferris Road to help relieve school property, or school traffic, from their property. And then they came to her and said, "You know, the walking trail from Gatlin Park, it, it comes up to her property, and then it, then there's Pompey Park." And so, she said, "Well, how about I just move the fence back, and I'll give the city of Conway the property to extend the walking trail on that side of the creek." So, she gave the city of Conway property to extend that. So, e- the, the, everything has been positive from that piece of property. For the city, uh, you know, the neighborhood market, the Chick-fil-A, I think those are great assets for the, the neighborhood, the community, uh, the relief of some traffic from, from the school. I think that's been a positive. And, um, I think a church sitting in the middle of that seven acres on her property been, would have probably the most positive effect of anything that's happened on her land. And, uh, I request that y'all, or submit to y'all that y'all would approve, uh, the res- only of that conditional use permit for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Baker, can I ask?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Is that property being leased to the church, or are they purchasing?
No, they're wanting to purchase it from my mom.
Purchase it? Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Come on down. Next person to speak in favor?
I may be close to the last one, so smile.
No worries.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Corey Imboden. Uh, I live at ten forty-eight Kadrin Settlement Lane in Conway. And my time will be brief. I'm here to, uh, if I can, read a statement from Trip Leach, who couldn't be here tonight. If you guys know Trip, he's a, a President of the Conway School Board. He's a small business owner and, and an active member in his church, which, by the way, is not our church. So if I can, I'd like to read that, and that'll be my time.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. "To whom it may concern, I would like to speak on behalf of One Church in their proposal for a church site located just south of Gatlin Park and close to Conway High School. One Church has been a positive community neighbor and has been a positive community partner with Conway Public Schools. Their benevolent, their benevolent efforts have had and continue to have a positive impact on our children, particularly Ida Burns and surrounding neighborhoods close to the park and a high school. These activities have included sock and coat drives, as well as teacher supply purchases at Ida Burns, and free smoke detector giveaways, and yard cleanup in the neighborhoods surrounding the park. All these activities have demonstrated One Church's desire to help families in need and to create positive community relationships, not only in the school district, but in their surrounding communities. They also provide other positive community events for children and their families free at Gatlin Park, such as cookouts, festivals, and games for anyone who wants to participate. I believe that One Church would be a good neighbor complying with all ordinances, laws, and even going to great lengths to maintain positive relationships with surrounding locals, and therefore, I would be in favor of their proposal. Disclaimer, I am only one voting member of the school board and therefore do not represent the school district's official position on this matter. However, I do speak for myself as one voting member of the district, a parent and as resident of Conway who loves this community and the people in it. Sincerely, Trip." Thank you.
Thank you. Next person to speak in favor?
Thank you. I'd like to just, if I can, give, give you a little bit of history of this area. Back in time, I represented Walmart Neighborhood Market, and they tried to buy the Pompey property. We couldn't get that rezoned. Their intention was to take eight acres and give twelve to the city. We couldn't get the rezoning for them. So then thereafter, Mr. Pompey, uh, the city wanted the property as for Pompey Park. That's why it's named Pompey. His name is Frank Pompey. He's from Arizona. So then I represented Mr. Pompey, and we sold the property to the city. Walmart Neighborhood Market originally looked at the Baker property, because I was their attorney at the time, but it, the property wasn't quite wide enough. So later, they came back with a redesigned parcel and, uh, and bought Ms. Clarice the front part of her property. The street extended, that's Ferris Road, back to allow some school ingress and egress, as you've heard. And the real pro- the real problem with this whole idea is that Ferris Road was not extended to the back of Walmart's property. Now, that's an anomaly that I don't find anywhere that I develop, or anywhere that I've seen. That's an anomaly, and it's the problem. Had that street been extended to the back of Walmart's, uh, property behind the building, then we wouldn't be here arguing over this. We could just tie in. It'd be done. But for some reason, that didn't happen at that time. The arrangement with Ms. Baker and Walmart is, is that she can extend that street or use it for residential purposes. So we asked for a conditional use to get it a residential zone with a conditional use. I think that is a residential use legally. Walmart does not buy that, and said they had six floors of lawyers, just as you heard, and would litigate this forever. That's been about two years. And it's been frustrating for this church, and they're renting and not owning. So then Ms. Baker sold to Walmart and has that access, but only for residential. But not necessarily R1 could be MF1, 2, or 3, depending on how you zone it. James has said it's probably not appropriate for R1 in his report. So for the neighbors, we could come back and try to build multifamily MF3, 2, or 1, and you'd have lots of construction. Would you rather have a church or that? She's going to sell the property someday to somebody, or her heirs will. Who do you want it to be? Do you want it to be the known people or the unknown people? So I've given you a brief history of the property, and I've been involved in it for, gee, almost twenty years, in all three different sections of it. And I, I don't have the answer for what you should do, but the anomaly is, is that Ferris Road was dead-ended. So one more fact. Presbyterian Church on the corner came in when we did the Walmart. And there's a prohibition, I believe you'll find it, that says they cannot accept deliveries on Sunday. That was a concession to the church on the corner, so that would not interrupt their services. So we have given concessions. So for them to have church on Sunday will not interfere with Walmart's trucking, because they're banned from Sundays. That's my opinion. I hope you'll vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have anyone else that'd like to speak in favor? Okay, we will open the floor to any opposition now. Have anyone that'd like to speak in opposition of this request? We've got some.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm Marie Fisher, and that's my home right there underneath adjacent properties. If you'll see, that is just a dead-end lot, and it's just been empty for many, many years. Because I've been there, well, since seventy-six, okay? I'd love to see it developed. I'd love to see a home built there. They have addressed a lot of issues, and they've put a lot into this, and I admire them for it, you know? And I'm a Christian woman. I'm just not a member of One Church, you know? I wish, like Frank Shaw said, I wish we could get Ferris Road. That would be the best option as far as traffic. You know, because it's going to tear our streets up. Belle Meade's already about to go, and that's just from regular high school traffic, you know? And you're going to have it, and we've dealt with that for many years, and it's good. Don't get me wrong. I know when not to go, and I know when to stay home, you know, to miss it. But this, I want them to have a good home. And I want them to have more than that one access and entrance, entrance and exits, okay? Because as far as fire safety, I do think about it. My husband was a firefighter for over twenty-something years, and I know a lot of the firemen. And I'm glad they've talked to the Fire Marshal and all. But that one entrance right there just scares the daylights out of me, for them and for us. As neighborhood, I'd love to keep it like it is. But do I want apartments? No, you know? But I've, every time I've sit down and went over this and the plans, it still looks like, why can't we do Ferris for them? That's their best option, and I'm praying they get it. I really do, because Ferris is, it would be a lot better interest. You talk about police, fire, EMS. They've got to have it in order to get to them, and they're going to want to start other programs at their church. They can't just sit there and say, we're going to die today. We're not taking any more in. You can't do that and be a servant of my God at least. You can't. You've got to take everything he gives you and give it your best shot, and that's what they're doing. And I admire them for it. But please, please let it be Ferris. Because I don't want to move. I'm getting too old in honoring. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next individual, or do we have anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of this request? Come on down, if you will, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, uh, my name is Blake Oregon. I, uh, live at thirteen seventeen Sunset Drive. Uh, I actually have a couple handouts for you guys, if you don't mind if I pass them out.
One second, your microphone's not on. There we go. Go ahead.
So we moved into the neighborhood about two years ago, and, uh, we have spent quite a bit of money, uh, renovating the house that we live in at thirteen seventeen. And part of the reason we moved into the neighborhood was because it was a nice, quiet neighborhood. Um, there wasn't a lot of traffic going through, and the location of this, uh, proposed church would greatly increase traffic. It's at the end of the dead end of the neighborhood, and I have included a map with, uh, what the main roads are and some of the roads that would have to be taken to access the church. And the people that were notified, they said by law were, uh, they lived in, within two hundred feet of the property line. And this affects people that go much, much further than that line. It goes through the entire neighborhood. My second concern is that I don't feel people were properly notified. One of the requirements is that they have to have a sign within fifteen days of the hearing. Um, they did that last month, but as of, uh, tonight, the sign still says October eighteenth. And, um, that's on the sign. That's at the dead end of the property. And the other sign is, uh, on the backside of Walmart, behind a delivery traffic only sign. So people wouldn't be able to see that sign anyway, unless they went past the sign. My third concern is that, um, with them wanting to be a part of the community and expand into, um, the park and include, uh, parking lot to do that, people are going to be using that parking lot that don't go to their church. So people are going to be, you know, going through our neighborhood to get there. And I've also included some pictures of on-street parking, um, within the past month. This is just four examples, but a lot of the times, you can only get one car through at a time with the people that are street parking, and, um, especially with, um, high school football games. On-street parking can get out of hand sometimes. So with all that being said, um, I really don't think it's a good idea to build a church there. And I hope that you, um, decline the conditional use.
Thank you.
Sir, this on-street parking seems to be day and night. Is it constant?
Yes, um, there is a lot of on-street parking. While the neighborhood is quiet, um, there is a lot of on-street parking, and you have to weave in and out of traffic, um, to get home sometimes. And if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those, too.
Good, thank you. Next person who'd like to speak in opposition? Come on down.
Hey, y'all. My name is Sean Passera, uh, thirteen eighteen Sunset Drive. Actually, I had the privilege of talking to Paul over the phone about this and get to voice my concerns, which is really great. So thank you, Paul, for taking the time. Man, yeah, on-street parking, I mean, there's so many issues. And the way that I think about this is like, I follow Jesus too, and being against the church being here is not shaking a fist at God. It's a square peg in a round hole. It just doesn't fit. To have that one entrance is just not good for traffic, for a multitude of reasons. It's older homes, it's smaller homes, it's homes that people have turned garages into third bedrooms, so they park in their small, very like, uh, uh, uphill driveway. And then so there's a lot of street parking. There's rent houses with multiple occupants, so people park in the street. So just like Blake said, people are moving kind of in and out. That's a, a very big concern. Also, as you can see from the pictures, there's no sidewalks. Everyone walks in the street. It's, one of the things we pride ourselves about this neighborhood is how quiet it is. Moms with strollers come to walk down our street, the high school running team goes down our street, the high school marching band goes down our street, because people don't drive a lot there. So adding this many vehicles coming in and out, and it won't just be Sundays. It'll be the weddings and the funerals and adding events. And, you know, even one of the things Paul said is like, that might not even be their forever home. So it might be another church that does something every day of the week. You know, we have to think long-term here. So I think that's, those are big concerns. For me, like, the ministry is our neighborhood. We kind of do life in our front yard. So I put a big swing, so my kids can be out front. Our neighbor who's across the streets here, our kids who are seven and four cross the street together. They hold hands and cross the street together to go to, basically, their adopted grandmother's house every day almost. And that would stop. Like, our people being in the front yards, kids playing in the street, kids playing basketball in the street would stop if this happened. And so I've told Paul, like, those are my concerns. If, you know, if they really cared about the people in this community, that's a big concern. Several of the people that came up to speak in favor of it named Ackland Gap, Greenbrier, they don't even live in Conway or in that neighborhood. They've been doing ministry in this neighborhood. Being the church there or not, they're going to keep doing that. Great, please, keep, you know, those are great things. So those are my big concerns, is the, the safety is just, I'd like, I fear for my kids. We don't have sidewalks. People park in the street. I park in the street. It's just our driveway is very narrow and, and very uphill, so, yeah, that's the biggest things, I think. Um, and, yeah, I got to voice that to Paul, so I'm hoping he's hearing that, and the people at One Church are hearing that. I'm praying for them, like, consistently, they find a good place. I know our church that I'm a part of really struggled to find a place. I know how hard that is. Uh, I spent ten years in environmental permitting and residential development. I know how hard it is to get the right permits and the right, find the right place, so, yeah. Praying for you guys, praying for One Church, y'all find the right spot. I don't think this is it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone?
My name is Philip Parrish. I live at seven Neverlandwood Drive on the west side in Smoking Oak Subdivision. How much time do I have?
Three minutes.
Very nice. Uh, thank you for hearing my time. I was baptized in a creek very much like Tucker Creek. And I'm a little bit conflicted, uh, that I think an indifference to the, uh, property owners that live will be most impacted by this church, uh, if it goes in. I think that a church would be the second-best use of the property, other than what it is now. And I understand the Baker Trust has the right to sell it to whoever they so choose. I was disappointed to learn from the Baker family that they had offered to the city to purchase this property, and the city passed on this, which I think was a great lack of vision, that the city should have considered buying this property as adjacent green space to the current parkland. And still, if that is an option, that would be my recommendation as a taxpayer, that they consider finding a way to negotiate with the property owners and the church to see if there's a way to initiate a campaign for a sales tax to possibly purchase this green space adjacent to the park that is. And there is a practical reason why I think the current way God made it is the best use of that land at this time. If, I was on my last military deployment, TDY, in twenty nineteen, when the flooding happened, the massive flooding in Conway and Tucker Creek seriously almost flooded out several neighborhoods in that area of the park. And that's still a real possibility. It could happen again. We all know and have heard that green space, grass and trees, does a better job of absorbing rainwater and can ease the risk of additional flooding in that area. Whereas we also know that more asphalt is just going to create more runoff into the creek. And if we have another extreme flooding event, the next one, more asphalt may increase the risk of flooding in that area. I think that is a practical reason to try to find a way for the city to purchase this land, to add to the park. And I will say, uh, like I said, if it were me, if this, if it can't be used as green space, if there's not a way for the city to get it, I think a church probably is, in my opinion, the second-best use. But I personally would like to see it remain green space if the city can find a way to buy it from the Bakers, if that's at all possible. I would be in favor of it, of it, as a taxpayer, and though some of my neighbors would be. But I also understand the concerns of those that live and will be most impacted by the traffic. I have to take their word for it. They know what's going to be most impactful to them because of the traffic concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Marsha LaCie. I live at twenty Ironwood. And I will say, I fought against Walmart because I look out my back door and there it is. But they came through with the traffic and the trucks and everything. And at this point, I'm truly glad they're there because I can get on the bike trail and do my mile and a half walk, which I did today. I'm eighty-seven years old and in really good health. And I'm like Phil, the church, but I did not understand from his speech about the conditional use permit. My concern is that that, but eventually, if the church were to dissolve, would that go commercial?
I can answer that, no.
What?
No ma'am, it would not.
It's still, well, your sign, your thing said, review of a, of a...
Conditional use permit?
Yeah.
And it's a conditional use for religious activities within a residential zoning.
Okay, could it ever go commercial?
It would have to be rezoned to commercial and it is highly unlikely because of the use is not congruent with what Mr. Walden was talking about earlier.
Okay. Well, I don't see that... Well, I just enjoy looking out on all the green space and when I'm walking. And I would like to see the city by it. Thank you.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Good evening.
I'm Suzanne Crowson and I live at number five Ironwood, right next door to Phil and just down the street from Marsha and I love Diane. I have, we have four that I just think of right off, second baddest people living right on that street in Ironwood. And my concern is this, and I walked out there and walked all around. I've lived there for forty-one years, raised four kids. All my boys played football out there on Gatlin and I love Gatlin and I love that green space. And I will tell you, I think the part that I'm thinking about has fifty huge trees. It is a beautiful, beautiful space and I'm glad that they've had chain link around it and have kept it like that. Have y'all, do y'all, have y'all ever walked out there to see that?
Yes ma'am.
And what it looks like? And, boy, we got blue herons, great blue herons down there in that creek and I don't think that they would be there. And this is something that's just kind of personal to me. I mean, I didn't even know Tripp, Tripp Leach is a wonderful friend of mine and I didn't know that he was going to get up here and say that. And I don't want to cause any crossways things because we all love Jesus and I know he loves us. And, but, it's just so pretty and so nice and I, I love churches, but I don't think that a parking lot in a church can do what the trees and the green grass can there. And I'm like Phil, I think that it would be wonderful for us, the city, to buy that and put it in there. After all, we gave up a lot when that, all of that went to Walmart and Chick-fil-A and I love them. But, and you said, very unlikely. Well, quite a few years ago, it was very unlikely that there was going to be Chick-fil-A and Walmart. And so that, I know that's what she's talking about. I'm seventy-six, so we not, may not be here to be around, but there will be others that will be there. And I invite you, she walked a mile and a half, I walked five miles on that. And it's, it's, we have a lady that is in a wheelchair and she's a bird watcher and she is a teacher here in this town. And I just think about her going up and down out there and has her little motorized electrical vehicle, you know, her wheelchair. What's that going to do to her bird watching? Okay. And I'm going to say this to, to, to One Church. Okay, I was raised in a little church. One church is not going to just be there on Sunday and Wednesday because they're going to have weddings, they're going to have funerals, they're going to have family reunions, they're going to have Sunday school class meetings out there and which they should be. And I love One Church. My, my across the street neighbor, Roy Stone. I love One Church, I don't mean that. Just, God help us find the right solution.
Amen, thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Okay. Seeing that there is none.
Planning staff did receive one more public comment today. I sent it out via email, but I'm going to read it to the record for you guys right now. "I am very concerned about the application for conditional use which would allow for the construction of a six-hundred-seat auditorium and one-hundred-and-sixty parking spaces on a residential lot located on the dead end of our neighborhood at thirteen oh one Sunset Drive by One Church of Conway. Current construction drawings show one entrance and one exit point that they are only accessible through Sunset Drive and Meadow Drive. I have lived in this neighborhood for forty-eight years and was under the impression that this area was zoned for residential only. I am not in favor of this because of the one entrance and one exit that would cause a large amount of traffic in our neighborhood on certain evenings and on Sundays when I would be trying to enter and exit my residence. If another entrance and exit would be available on the other side of the church, this would be a much better option." That's from Gladys Hilliard, twenty-four-ten Meadow Drive. Thank you.
Thank you Lauren. Too timed yourself. Okay, if we don't have any more public comment, we will bring it back into commission for discussion, oops, excuse me, questions. Commissioners, what do we think? Please sir.
This is probably staff. What's the, what's the reasoning behind a more, something more dense than R1 being the right fit if, you know, for a future rezoning?
That, that's typically when I include that comment, it's not necessarily saying that that's the, that's the right fit. That's likely what the market would bear in this, in this location. So essentially, because there's, there's a lot of constraints on that property and given its, its location, that development as a standard single-family subdivision is not likely because of size. Just saying that that's an unlikely scenario.
Gotcha, okay. And then, while you're up there, are there, if this were to be approved today and it went through and got through the city council and all that, are there other options for additional access points that would still be considered? Or when you said that the city didn't want to pursue eminent domain, is that completely off the table? I'm just trying to understand what could change if it was approved?
I think that's probably the question better suited to talk to the folks in Bentonville at Walmart. Because it, that's, you know, in, in our discussions, they, they were very clear that they, they kind of wanted to leave access as it, as it currently stands and so in terms of the city going through the eminent domain process, it, it would be a significant battle.
Yeah, one second.
Behind the church?
I'm, which direction are you pointing on the screen? Like left or right or top or?
To the left, behind the church. Where?
If, well, you'll note on the, on the top, there's an original conceptual site plan. That had a primary access coming off of the Walmart parking lot, which is to the left.
Okay.
On the revised conceptual site plan, it has primary access coming off of Sunset Drive there.
It's, it's not a street, it's a walking trail.
Oh, you're talking, you're talking about on the top, that's, that's where the Kinley, Kinley Trail is, on, on the, the top there.
Okay.
So where, yeah, there's Tucker Creek and there's, there's Kinley Trail up there in the top portion.
Okay.
So one more question, James. When I was looking into this, trying to familiarize myself with the area, the easiest way I got there was going through the high school, between the stadium and the auditorium. All of the traffic, I guess, estimates and the, the things in the, in the report talk about Sunset and Meadow, did, did we look at how it might impact the high school and traffic through there?
Uh, no, more than likely, i-if you're, if you're thinking about the times where the school is causing traffic and the times that a, a church is causing traffic, they're, they're not concurrent typically. I mean, I, I don't know of a lot of churches that have, you know, church on, on Friday nights or, you know, seven o'clock in the morning or at three o'clock in the afternoon. So, you know, more than likely, ba-based on their operations or similar operations of another religious facility, church, you know, more than likely, they're going to, it would be Sunday morning or Sunday evening.
Would it provide parking for events at the school? Would that be parking that they would use?
That would be entirely up to the, the, the property owner, essentially, whether, whether they allowed access to the site or not. So it's, that's not, that's not something that would be a condition, you know, propagated by, by staff.
I see Mr. Hudson, so you're shaking his head, yes.
I guess the main thing that I keep hearing is about the traffic and I think there was one person that spoke in or a couple of people that spoke in favor that were saying that there was a huge discrepancy between what this traffic study was and what there actually was. And I just kind of wanted, I know we were kind of talking through it, but just a little more clarification on that as to why they're, they're saying that their membership now, they only have maybe a hundred to two hundred, which we know, our church, our, our goal, I guess, is for most church memberships to grow, so that, you know, we, we know that will happen, but is, is there a huge discrepancy from what the staff sees between what they're saying and what research that the city staff did?
I, I mean, from a standpoint of, you can, you can look at the, the number of parking spaces that they'll have on the site and that's largely going to limit the number of, of cars that, that would come in there. When you're looking at traffic generation, you know, it, it's not necessarily just at one point in time. So the basis of, of the way that we analyze that, and it, it is purely an estimate, right? I mean, it is an estimate as much as an estimate is an estimate. It's, it's based on the ITE transportation or, or traffic demand model or what, I, I can't remember what the, the specific model, the, the ITE, the Institute, Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Model. And so basically, that, what, that book, and, and we have an online tool that is based out of that, essentially, they go out and do survey of various types of uses, various types of uses, church being, being one of those. They take statistical analysis of that and then you basically come out with, with something where you can plug in so many trips per square foot of a, of a particular use. And so that's our, sort of the math that we did is, we've got twenty-one thousand square feet, it says X number of trips per square foot, therefore we get this. So that's what it, what it is on a, on a typical Sunday, based on that. That, no, that's not to say that you're going to, I mean, that would obviously result in people parking over on top of one another so that you would, you would assume in that situation that that might be distributed at different times of day. Again, you know, as they said, they, they typically operate on a, a Sunday morning only, there is no restriction, so should a different type of, you know, church go in there at some point, it could be that they operate Sunday morning, Sunday afternoon or Sunday evening, so.
Is a trip considered round trip or one-way?
It's, it is.
One-way?
In and out.
In and out, okay.
James, I guess it's the same traffic model you've been using for?
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the same.
You didn't change your process for this?
No, no, it's the same. And, you know, there, it's not a perfect science. Trip generation is not a perfect science.
I have a question and it's probably the same question I have every time we deal with a traffic issue and a land use issue. We're not necessarily tasked with figuring out the traffic on the streets. We're tasked with, is this a proper use of the land? Is that a correct assumption? Is that a correct statement? I mean, we take into account the traffic, but if we look at what this land is and what it is, is, is our main task to figure out, and this is just to make sure we're on the same page here, is this a good use of this land here? I don't know that and I feel for all the emotional arguments around putting parking on the street and all of that, I get that, but I don't think that's a land use issue that is a, maybe you shouldn't park on, I don't know how that works. I, I get, you know, so I'll kind of figure out to make sure I'm heading the right direction with my, with my thinking here. The traffic in there is one thing and that is a traffic department whoever issue, but is this a question of what is this land good for? What can we do with this and the use of that land, right?
So in, in terms of evaluating conditional use permits, what you are looking at is the land use, what are the aspects of that, that particular land use in this site? So it could be, what are the traffic impacts, potential traffic impacts that, that occur? What are the noise impacts that might occur? What are the light impacts? What, what are the sort of various types of externalities that could affect adjacent property? So traffic is one of those things that, that you look at and consider within a broader view of what are the overall impacts. That's why you look at conditional uses because you're looking at, is that particular use appropriate in this area based on all of the impacts that it might have? And that's, those, it's, it's a sort of a broad look at everything.
I have traffic concerns that I'll do in discussion, but while you're here, I have more of a question about the flooding impacts. I know a lot of times development, especially something of this size, changes the topography in a way that could, if this is a flood zone, could it cause the neighborhoods around with the way it's going to be developed to flood if we have flooding events like we've had the past few years?
You'll, you'll notice, that's, that's something that Mr. Treese has already, already kind of looked at, but largely the activity on site would, would occur outside of the flood plain. So this, this property, part of it is, is floodway, part of it is flood zone AE, which is basically where we've established a base flood elevation in that area. So those are, those are technical issues that would be, if it, if it were to move forward when it went through development review, that would be something that would be examined, but just a, just a general glance from a, from a planner's standpoint in terms of looking at it, largely what they're proposing to do is outside of a flood plain.
Just to add to that, Laura, that could change the flow of water. And because it is concrete and it doesn't absorb water, the water's going to go other places. So it could change the flow of water. And I guess that wouldn't, we would know that through review, but the water's going to flow in a different direction.
Yeah, we would, so we would require basically a drainage report that goes associated with this, where basically they would have to mitigate pre-construction to post-construction. So post-construction, they would, they would need to be, it would need to be entering and leaving the property in the same way, the same rate, same volume as it was before it was developed.
All right, now I have, I do have concerns about the traffic that's being raised. I'm in that neighborhood quite a bit and there is a lot of on-street parking and two vehicles do not pass through there at the same time. I wouldn't be as concerned if the traffic that was going to be coming into the facility was spread throughout the day, but you have a time period, especially when a church lets out, everybody's beating feet to get out of the parking lot and there, I think there would be major safety and traffic issues, just trying to get the inflow and outflow of traffic out of that area, back through a neighborhood onto those more minor arterial streets.
And I agree with Laura's, with what Laura said, and my concern is about emergency personnel that may need to get there. We've seen some elderly people come up today and even younger people could have an emergency. They have to deal with the on-street parking as it is and then there could be other parking, other traffic coming through there. If there's, it's, it's almost a one-way street at that point. And, or one, yeah, one-way street or one-car street because of the parking. So I see there could be a problem with the emergency personnel trying to get to... because of the parking, so I see that could be a problem with the emergency personnel trying to get to a residence maybe.
So, that was advocated, if this is developed as something else that they don't need a, a conditional use for, say it's, yeah, then, and they don't have to come before us, how do you mitigate that? Because it's still going to park on the street, and it's gonna be all these units, so you're not going to get away from the one-way street being an issue, so do we punish the applicant because he'll park on the street and you can't have it because they park on the street, or do we, because they, if someone decide, James, question for you, if someone decided if their owner sold and developed it as duplexes town, because I don't know, right? Something they'll have to come back before us for, right?
Low density.
Yeah, that they don't see us for, then we have no say-so over what they do, we have the normal development reviews, but as far as like a review, they don't need that, so if it's developed as that, I don't know how many units can fit on that land or whatever, but it's gonna be enough to where we're gonna have the same, you wanna have the issue of the traffic and not the say-so, we're not gonna be able to go in and say, okay, you can't build this, so it's a duplex because of the traffic, so we have to, I'm, but I'm, I'm, I'm very, I'm very aware of the traffic issues you guys are mentioning, but there's a way around what we're saying without us, it coming to us, and it's still gonna be an issue there, so we're not gonna, we're not going to sit here at this table, whatever this thing is, and figure out a way of the traffic. And if I park on the street, it can be gotten around, right, and it doesn't have to be what we're saying.
Right, well, with the issue at hand, I feel like it is, it's a big problem. If it were to be low-density, this is R1, I guess, so it would be low-density, it wouldn't be as many cars anyway, uh, if it's low-density, single-family homes or whatever.
In, in essence-
That's just the way I look at it.
It's, it is the, the land use rights that are vested with this property currently is for, for single-family development. If it were to go through something that didn't conform to the minimum standards of R1, P, for instance, like a PUD, or if it were, uh, duplex development or any type of multifamily, it would, it, it basically come back to the planning commission and city council, because they, they would have to get different land use rights to develop the property in a more dense way.
Yeah, and the floodline would also prohibit the development of that whole basically Tucker Creek Trail Edge, um, for me, a multifamily, so you would essentially just have the southern portion of that property that would be developable for residential.
And even if it was developed as duplexes or whatever, most likely, all of those people would not be coming home or leaving at the exact same period of time, so the traffic would be more spread out in the neighborhood versus, I mean, I-
And see, I look at that as a frequency though, there, there's gonna be more trips than, than-
At different times. It's like when church starts, you gotta have an influx of people, and when church is over, you got all these people leaving because you don't-
Six o'clock coming home from a baseball game, so that's not gonna be mitigated by the fact that we don't have a church, that it's gonna be cars in the street that probably shouldn't be in the street to begin with.
But there are fewer cars, there'd be fewer, fewer cars coming through, that's what.
It feels like our responsibility is, should, in our conversation, should solely be focused on the conditional use permit in the church, not what else might, you know, I mean, we, we can predict and speak in hypotheticals all day long, but I'm not really sure that, as much fun as that is, um, that, that that's really where we need to focus our conversation, I think we probably just need to say, you know, we, we have this one thing in front of us, and is it the right use for that, and then what may or may not come after that, I guess will have to be something that may or may not be dealt with down the road, I, just kinda-
But like James was saying, we have to take all those factors, those variables into this, because it is a conditional use.
Yeah, I just mean, I don't know that we need to think about, well, if we don't approve this, it might be a apartment, you know, I don't, I don't know that we need to get into those hypotheticals, it seems like we just, is this the right use for the church or not, yes or no?
Well, we already voted before that we agreed it was a good use, um, I think it's now just coming down to this access, singular access point is created a burden for the neighborhood, so I still think the use is appropriate, just concerned about the access, just like everybody else.
Yeah, I don't know that, we can't go back and redo, but I don't know that we would've approved it if it would've just had single access point to begin with, right, which is what brings us to where we are.
Yes, ma'am. Sure, yeah, I understand. I'm a wampus cat, I believe, believe. Yes, ma'am.
I live right behind Conway High School, baseball field. Never been a problem, the kids are great. Even though one of them was, had such an arm, they broke my panty up last one time, but it, it was all right because she had an arm on her. But anyway, you know, the kids are great, like that lady said, it's every night, you know, and when the band practice is early and sometimes late. You know, I know that from experience, I've had them in athletics, and I've had them in music and other arts myself, mine are all grown. But that one incident, it's gonna kill it. It's gonna force me to leave.
Thank you. Yeah, we're gonna cut it off at some point, um, commissioners, what say you, we call it to a vote, somebody like to make a motion?
Permitted, right.
Yes.
Uh, and then the vote falls where?
That's right.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the, um, approve the conditional use permit, um, with the staff recommendations here. I know they recommend that we deny it, but if we approve, they had the, um, following conditions, the one through ten there. I recommend that we approve the conditional use permit with the ten listed items there attached to it.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor from Arthur in a second, uh, from Ms. Sanders Jones, I will call the roll. All right, Ms. King?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Yay.
I'm a yay as well, Mr. Ingram.
Nay.
Nay?
No.
No?
Yes.
Motion passes, was it, uh, I'm sorry, my math is terrible right at this instant. Four to three, yes, thank you. Okay, so, in that event, the motion passes.
Mr. Chair, is it okay if we take a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Folks clear out?
Yes, sir. No. We amended that. Oh, sorry, yes, that's correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just take a five-minute recess, we'll let people clear out. It's usually, there's a lot of side conversations that happen, and it gets kinda distracting.
Okay, we are back in session. Jumping into our next item, item two B. This is a request to annex. This is thirty point two seven acres located at the south of Lower Ridge Road, east of East German Lane. Mr. Walden?
Yes, applicant is requesting to annex this under R1 zoning for single-family residential. Staff concurs with that request. On the comprehensive plan, the, or not the comprehensive plan, but the Lower Ridge Road corridor study, this is indicated for traditional neighborhood, which calls for a compact pedestrian-oriented mixed-use area that includes various types of housing, commercial activities and open space. So, might think more similar to Hendrix Village. However, they're annexing as R1, which is, which is a lower-impact type use. So, that's fine. In terms of looking at traffic impact, the impact of this could be significant, but it is a large piece of property. It's, likely use would be for single-family residential. Nothing has been submitted for review, so we don't have anything basis for that. But, looking at the acreage of the property, potentially up to one hundred and seventy-five standard single-family lots, which would generate on a typical weekday about sixteen hundred and fifty-two vehicle trips on there. It's not within any regulated floodplains or floodways. Lower Ridge Road is a major arterial, but it's open ditch and city maintains. So, based on all the development that we've seen go out there, there's more than likely going to be one of the ones that will be moved up the list for improvement over time. Looking at all of the different departments that reviewed this, Planning Department recommends annexation. The Fire Department recommends annexation, provided fire flow requirements are met, which the applicant will have to confirm with Conway Corporation. Conway Corporation recommends annexation. Transportation Department does as well. So, based on that, staff recommends approval of the request. Would allow for appropriate development of the property and be a valuable addition to the city. Any questions?
No, sir. Mr. Longley, we're gonna open up the floor to an opportunity for you to add anything, if you have anything to add.
I do not, unless y'all have any questions.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? All right. Anyone here to speak? Anyone else here to speak in favor of the request? Or anyone to speak in opposition of this request to annex? All right, seeing that there is none, we will bring this back into commission. Commissioners, any further discussion needed? Open the floor for a motion.
We've to approve.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your development. Okay, next item is two C. This is a request to rezone from R1 to O2. This is at oh point one-four acres immediately west of four forty-nine Reedy Road, or as identified as Integrity Insurance Building. Mr. Walden?
Yes, so this is at the corner of Ryan and Reedy, as you indicated. The property is split-zoned, so the front portion of it is zoned O2, and the back portion of it is zoned R1. Under the applicant's previous development review approval, they did not have approval to install a parking lot. Since then, a gravel parking lot has appeared on-site where detention, I believe, was proposed. So, as a result, this was identified by staff notifying the applicant of the, sort of, the violation on there. The first step in rectifying this is to rezone the property to a zone that allows parking as that principal use to tie it all together. So, that's basically bringing the back half of the property in conformance with the O2 zoning in the front. The site is partially within a power line easement that directly abuts the same easement on A1 and to the west, and R1 property to the south. So, it's, you know, for any type of structural use adjacent, there's really minimal risk for impact because someone's not going to develop under a power line, or God bless them if they do, they're gonna have some real problems. But, the areas, the surrounding areas is predominantly single-family residential and undeveloped. Staff did not find that the rezoning would likely harm adjacent property. So, based on that, staff recommends approval of rezoning request because it would not negatively impact adjacent property and help bring the site into compliance with applicable land use regulations. So, any questions?
Don't think so. Commissioners, thank you. Anyone here to speak in favor of this request, additional comments?
It's my property. I just wanted to, just for the record, the retention area was on the north side by Ryan, and between the building and the road. And, we actually paid a fee in lieu of that before we got their certificate of occupancy. So, that was already addressed two years ago. And the parking lot, we just didn't have the money to finish it two years ago when we were doing it. So, we're starting it now, and we're working with Levi prior to him leaving. So, hopefully, apologize about the violations, and we're gonna get it all up to code and ready to go.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone here to speak in opposition to this rezoning request? All right, Commissioners, what do you say? Seems congruent?
One second.
We have a motion from Arthur and a second from Ray. All those in favor?
Aye.
As well? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passes unanimously. All right, our final public-carrying item this evening is a request for a conditional use permit for a kennel and an I3. Mr. Walden?
Yes, this application's got a fun name with it for Posh Park. But, it is located at the corner of Mayor Lane and South Amity on about one point seven acres. The existing structures on-site are a forty-five-hundred-square-foot metal office building, plus a fourteen-hundred-and-forty-square-foot and a nine-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot metal accessory structures. Based upon sort of the applicant's intended development, it appears that those, all those structures will remain. The requested use is for a kennel. The comprehensive plan indicates this location for light industry. Based on our traffic analysis, we estimate that it would probably generate around one hundred and fifty vehicle trips per typical workday or weekday. We don't have reliable traffic counts for the area, but we estimate that in this location, about thirty-five-hundred to six thousand average daily trips on the streets there. In terms of looking at it, there are no plans for street improvement in the area. It's not within any regulated floodplains or floodways. Looking at this, essentially, the zoning code defines anything as a kennel that is an establishment wherein a person, business or organization engages in the practice of boarding, breeding, buying, grooming, letting for hire, training for a fee, or selling dogs or other animals. So, as you can tell from the site plan, they intend to be somewhat of like a daycare, doggy daycare type use, there with some additional uses with it. The development is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. While the site is predominantly surrounded by commercial and industrial uses, there are some single-family uses that abut the property to the east across Mayor Lane. So, while the location is suitable for the requested use, we do need to have sort of appropriate conditions in place to mitigate the negative impacts that could occur towards adjacent property. So, based on all of that review, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with fourteen listed conditions. I'm willing, more than happy to go through those, or just let y'all, y'all have the ability to read as well. So, any questions?
Only question I have is why CUP in lieu of just go on C3?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
From a staff standpoint, we would prefer that because it does protect adjacent property. It's more likely to protect adjacent property, so I'm getting tired.
I like it.
So, the owners are?
I don't know. Did you have a question, Rebecca? Oh. Yeah, I don't know. When they come up, I'm sure they can answer that question.
Have a question for?
Yeah, this may not be the time, and it's kind of ticky and it's down in the weeds. Number six, no animals should be outside before 6:00 AM or after 10:00 PM. I mean, I'm sure the intent is that the animals shouldn't be out like in mass quantity, like, you know, but... Yeah, but like if they have one dog and they take it outside, they can do that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean...
Yeah.
The playground's not open until after 6:00 AM.
You know what I mean, like?
Well, you know, we will be out there at 3:00 AM.
I'm sure you will.
Diligently enforcing this.
I'm sure you will.
We'll make sure no dogs are having potty breaks at that time.
Just saying.
Can you go back to number fourteen? Because I don't know if that was to Brandon's question, or... So, if it's not done in two years, can you explain fourteen and then I think about it?
Yeah, the reason why we have had numerous zombie conditional use requests, that essentially, we've had ones that have been approved five, ten years back, and then they never get developed, and then they roll around and come back and say, "Hey, we want to build this now." Knowing that, you know, over a five-to-ten-year period, conditions within area can dramatically change that might make that use a lot less appropriate, based on what's changed. And so, as a general practice, it's not something that we have in the regulations yet, that we do intend to have in the regulations, basically, that if it's, it's a use it or lose it, essentially. Because if you're not intending to use it, then there's no reason to have that vested land use right.
Okay, thank you.
Makes sense. Any further questions for James? Thank you. We have anyone else here to speak in favor? Name and address, if you will.
Yes, Kevin Miller, eleven seven forty Moll Mel Boulevard. So, I am the owner of Posh Park. We're very excited about this opportunity to be in Conway. We have been searching for about a year or more for a property, and it's very hard to find one to put a kennel in Conway and not disturb too many people. So, we think we found the right one. We currently have a property in Moll Mel that we use right now. We know there's a high demand for doggy daycare and boarding here, just because we get a lot of people from Conway that are using our services, as well as employees. So, we have, there's facilities here that are no longer taking puppies or taking daycare or boarding because everybody's full. So, that's about all I really have to say. I'm new to this, so I'm open to questions, and I know y'all have lots of questions, so I'm open to those.
Are you in the grants with the background condition?
I am. Most of those I was fine with. I had a query just about number eight. What, I know y'all want to put shrubs around, but this is one point seven acres, so it's a lot of fencing around this property. This is also, it's industrial use, so my understanding was it was for, you know, this type of business. So, just not sure about number eight. That's, oh, yeah.
A mall curtain?
Well, that's what I'm trying to get clarification. We currently have eight-foot wooden fences in our play areas right now. The place currently does have fencing around it, which we were going to put, you know, a privacy cover over it, so the dogs aren't going to stand there. Most of the times, dogs don't stand and bark out too much. They're usually trying to get back in. And we will have indoor play areas, so most of the times, the dogs come in and run around and play inside. We do have outdoor play, there will be some out there, but, you know, like I said, it's very rare they stand at the fence and bark out. And we will have staff in the play yard, so we regulate the barking. We don't just let them have, I mean, our staff would go crazy if they barked all the time, so...
But, do you know what a noise-abatement curtain is?
There's, there's different terms, there are different levels of that. So, I know what that means, but to, like, that's what I'm trying to get clarification on.
Do we have a clear definition of a noise-abatement curtain?
I mean, there's all different sizes, of course. I mean, that would, could be a wall that has insulation in it that would be noise-abating.
Basically, something other than chain-link fence that helps cut down on noise.
I guess the exterior play area isn't the entire perimeter of the one point seven acres. There's going to be designated play areas, is what I was envisioning from what you said.
Yeah, to begin with, the building there on the right, we will start with the play yards, the three, and we will kind of grow into these areas, you know, as we go. So, we're gonna start small, of course, which is gonna take a little bit of time. But, really, it's gonna be on the other side of the building. Most of the playing and the barking and the noise is gonna come from the east side, or sorry, the west side of the building. Homes are to the right, so they shouldn't hear as much as what, you know, the barking's gonna go from the other direction, so...
Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Open the floor to any more public comment. If we have anyone here to speak in favor or opposition to this request, come on down.
I did have a question for Mr. Miller. Will you be having, I guess you will have animals overnight, and you will have staff?
Yes, we do.
Overnight, okay. Okay.
And they won't be outside after that.
All right. Floor is yours, sir.
I'm Don Havens. My wife Kay and I live at nineteen hundred South Amity Road, immediately across the street from Mayor Lane on the left, residential from there to them. I think we just got our property values kilt right here, or we're in the process of doing it. But, I've got some, a couple of questions, I guess, but I want to preface those remarks by saying, I appreciate the work that went into this. What comments and stuff is included in this addressed a lot of our concerns, and I appreciate that. There's a few questions I got. How many animals are we talking about at any given time?
Mr. Miller, do you know?
We're talking about one dog or a hundred dogs?
Well, we look, I mean, we're gonna grow. It started to be a while before we did a hundred dogs. But, we would not have a hundred dogs just right there on that side. They're gonna be on the other side, spread out, plus they'll be staffed there to mitigate the barking. Like I said, we don't allow barking, which is gonna happen, but we...
Well, I wish you'd have my dog. Yeah. The other question I've got is, I understand the definition that was given, but there's some loopholes there. Does this include goats, ducks, chickens? Reptiles? Rodents?
Exclusive to dogs and cats.
Okay, long as that's it, we're good. I also noted in here that if there's an animal on premises, there'll be someone on premises twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Who's gonna enforce that?
So, we have, just to keep the dogs safe, there's been an incident recently in Texas where a place burned down and fight the dogs. So, we actually have to watch that, that's part of our customer service.
I would assume there'd be a certain amount of liability, too, to take on if you left someone's dog unattended?
I police my speeding and stuff, but sometimes my definition of correct is not the same as my oldest son is in law. I'm just curious about who's gonna have oversight here in final say. And boarding and grooming and breeding?
No breeding.
No breeding. I thought breeding was included?
That's what they put, I think that's the only thing for dogs, I guess, with their definition.
Yeah, well, it was in there, so basically, that's about all I got, other than the fact that I see it being really detrimental to my property values. We moved out there a long time ago. We liked the area, loved the location. We got good neighbors that moved in with us. Conway Kerr Service, UPS is out there, Weaver Bailey, they're all good. And we don't have problems with those folks. We don't want any problems. We're retired. I'm not getting up at six o'clock in the morning, you know? If the dogs are barking, I'm calling somebody, so stay by your phone.
Yes, sir. We're gonna give you Mr. Miller's cell phone number.
Yeah. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. We have anyone else to speak in favor or opposition? Yes, ma'am?
Well, I don't appreciate all the giggling and laughing and all this stuff about a bunch of dogs that's gonna be across the street from my house, okay? And, I want it taken a little bit more seriously than that, because I live there twenty-four-seven. And I don't want to walk out my mine back door and hear a bunch of dogs. I don't own a dog. I don't want a dog. And I don't want to hear a dog. Especially, I don't want to hear a bunch of them. And, like he said, our property value has gone to pot probably now. Because, and I want you to know something, sir, why don't you put it in your backyard? Take your money, whatever it costs, to buy that building. Go buy you two or three acres, set you a nice big home there, and put all your dogs in your backyard. And then you come tell me that they don't bother you. That's what I want you to do. I'm Kay. I'm his wife.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, like I said, you know, I'd like to take this a little bit more serious, because I am there. Whether anybody else is over there or not, it won't be him. So, I'd just like you to consider that this is our home. And, whatever value it has now, I don't know what the value's gonna be when a bunch of dogs are moving across the street.
Understand. Thank you. Have anyone else here to speak in favor or opposition? Yes, sir. How are you?
Hello, my name is Marty Backy, and I live at nineteen ten Amity Road. I'm two houses down from this. My main, one of my main concerns is, I really think a facility like this should be outside the city limits. You know, we live by the lake. We've got several people coming out there already dropping off dogs, just abandoning dogs out in that area. I'm afraid that if we get a facility like this, people are gonna just think, "Oh, there's a dog facility out here, let's just go drop a dog out here," and they'll be running wild. You know? The other thing I noticed is the timeframe. On Monday through Friday, it was six AM to five-thirty PM or something like that. And then on Saturday and Sunday, it's eight to five. Why can't it be eight to five, Monday through Saturday, if you approve that? I don't think the six-thirty to five-thirty, whatever it was, I think six-thirty is a little bit much to open up a kennel and everything. If you can do it eight to five, two days a week, you could do it seven days a week. But, I'm against the whole development. I think it needs to be outside the city limits. There's plenty of places outside the city that have spots that they could go to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, come on down.
Good evening. I'm Shane Dixon on CCS Transportation Next Door, which would be on the side that we're gonna put the dogs at barking. I'm for business. I agree that, I'm for anybody doing business, been self-employed for thirty years. I can appreciate anybody's vision and wanting to do something. But, for the Haven's sake and other neighbors over there, I just wanted to put some thoughts in that, yes, we're a quiet office. We have a trucking company there, a lot of people in and out. And every time someone walks out and we're trying to conduct business, you're looking at dogs barking the whole time. And I know dogs can be controlled, but I also know that there is an issue with the noise, and I would just, and there's a lot of wildlife that runs around out there, and they're gonna see those, and that's gonna, you know, trigger the barking. And I'm not, I hate to say I'm opposed to it, but I would really be heavy in consideration of what the criteria and the conditions is, and for the neighbor's sake, even more than mine. I mean, I don't live there like they do. I just conduct business there, and would appreciate your consideration of their situation of being there twenty-four-seven and me being there through business hours through the week. It will change the noise factor there drastically, and I feel like it will. And like I said, I support you, want you, want everybody to succeed in business. Just, it is gonna have an impact, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Miller, can you confirm for me? There seems to be an assumption that the dogs are gonna be let loose in a fence in the backyard and just there all day. Would you confirm that there are times where there's inside playing, outside? Like, I'm thinking of like a daycare. I've never had a dog. I had a kid with a daycare, right? And they went outside certain times of the day, and they came in certain times of the day.
Some, it is free roam, take free during the day, but we do have times where we put them up for naptime. We take them to calm them down. So, if a dog is excessively barking, we will put them inside to keep them down. If one starts barking now, we'll, so we watch that to make sure we don't have excessive barking. So, we do a rotation. Plus, we usually start dinner around four-thirty. That's when we start putting the dogs and bringing them inside. So, we're usually shutting down. The reason we're open just is because people are taking up their dog. So, then we still need to have that open hours, but most of our dogs are gonna be inside around four-thirty-five. And maybe in the morning, they're not gonna be outright as it's in. We're gonna feed them breakfast, we have to let them sit for a little bit, just so they don't go out. We have to let them sit inside, so they're not outright.
These are dogs that will, that are owned by people that's, it's like a doggy daycare. They're gonna, or they're gonna be boarded for a while. So, it's not like the Conway... So it's not like the Conway Animal Shelter where you just have dogs for adoption or.
And we also are gonna do training. So if these dogs that do have excessive barking, we will have the back door will be our training. So it's gonna help if these dogs help maintain that. So we'll encourage the parents to say, hey, if you wanna come back, we need you to do the training. If you can't, then excessive barking, we'll, we'll say, sorry, you can't. We'll have plenty of dogs to deal with. So if we have that, we just, trust me, my staff would go crazy. And we try to help the barking.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor or opposition to this request?
Yes, I don't have a dog in this hunt, but I wanted to take an opportunity to be on this side of the podium. I don't remember who was on the commission when Hound's Hideaway came before it, but I do recall that there was a lot of the same concerns. And they have ended up being very good uh neighbors and it has been a valuable asset to our community. And if you go on vacation, you have to call them like three months in advance. They stay completely booked. So I think, I just think that it would be a valuable asset to our community. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Any further commentary? Anybody have anything else to add? We will bring it back into commission. Commissioners.
I have a question, I think, for James now that I've kind of heard and seen. Um, I noticed the zoning is kind of all over the place out there. There's some A one and there's some industrial and then a little bit of R one. Can you speak to like what this? Was this industrial first or did the residential come in after? Or was it kind of residential first and the industry and commercial just built in around it?
I would probably defer to the, the residents that are out there 'cause I am honestly not sure. I, I do not know.
Looks like it's been on an as needed basis because probably that was all A one at one time. Um, and then if business needs to be here, they got a zoning and here they got a zoning. So it's just kinda. And there's just the one slice of R one right there.
So is there, is there any type of noise ordinance after their hours of operation? Cause I think, were they worried about times all throughout the day?
Yeah.
Or day and night?
Day and night. Any concern about a day and night?
Day and night, yeah.
Any further discussion? James is asking them what it previously was. A good answer to Laura's question.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, we had a little committee back there. Um, essentially, yeah, one, the, the, one of the neighbors said that the residential has been there. Some of that residential's been there at least in the mid, mid to late fifties, which pre, predates the, the industrial part.
Thank you. Further discussion? Call it to vote? Anyone like? Thank you. We have a motion from Arthur with, to approve with the staff's fourteen recommendations. Do we have a second? We have a second from Ray. Yet we'll roll call. Ms. King?
No.
Ms. Sanders Jones?
Yay.
I'm a yay as well. Mr. Ingram?
Yay.
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 Um, motion passes. Okay, now we, that concludes our public hearing items this evening. We have, the next item is a, item three A, which is an adoption of our calendar for next year, twenty twenty-two.
I move we adopt our calendar for twenty twenty-two?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yay.
Aye.
Any opposed? One of those is on your birthday. I'm kidding.
I better write it down.
Motion passes unanimously. Calendar is approved. Is it really? Okay, uh, and then I guess the, our three B item is the election of officers for our twenty twenty-two year. Mr. Walden, what's the best way for us to? Proceed that election?
Well, you, you know, it's.
Whoever's not here gets elected.
It, it, the ballots call for y'all to, to select this each November. Uh, obviously, if you do not feel like you want to select it tonight, you do have December, but. Uh, you'll certainly need to be thinking along those lines because the chair and the vice chair are both uh graduating out of the planning commission. So we're, we're going to need to have those two positions filled. Uh, as you're all aware, uh, chair is responsible for running the meeting, so essentially calling items as, as Brandon does. Uh, vice chair is there to step in if uh the chairs cannot be present or is, becomes incapacitated in their duties. So.
Brandon, when is your term up?
Yeah, this is it for me.
Well, Arthur, you've been the vice chair.
Yeah, he's real enough to, that's what he's saying.
That was real convenient how that worked for you.
I think the first question, does anyone like to volunteer for any of these positions?
I'd like to nominate Ray as the chair. Has the experience. She looks ready.
I think it's a great idea.
She has good questions.
Do you accept?
Yeah.
You don't ask me questions. Can I still ask questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, I also make sure, cause I have questions.
That's great. So we have a nomination for Ray.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ray is our new twenty twenty-two chair.
I wanna nominate Rebecca for vice chair.
Sounds great. I'll second that.
I'll second.
I'll accept as long as Ray asks all the questions.
That's fair. Okay, so we have, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Welcome, Ms. Vice Chair for twenty twenty-two.
You better not be incapacitated.
No more than two times a year.
Okay.
Cause you know that third one, I don't wanna get the nasty email.
And I'm not gonna have any more baggies, so.
You promise?
Yes, I prom, I promise.
What about secretary?
Ms. Laura? Yes, I know.
Yeah.
I like that, Laura. You like that?
That's a lot of work.
Essentially, secretary is there if staff is incapacitated. So we, we largely fill the function of.
If Laura, if Lauren can't do it, it can't be done.
Lauren, you better show up, girl. I second.
All those in favor of that nomination? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. We have filled our positions. Okay, now we're moving on to this election of commission nominees. I would love to hear how the interviews went last week. Yeah. Lay it on us. Your microphone's off. There you go.
I'm just, I'm just stepping away from the microphone. Uh, we had nine eligible nominations uh submitted by the, the deadline. Uh, we did conduct interviews. Um. Two nominees uh were selected. Those nominees were Alexander Baney and, and Ethan Reed. Uh, an additional appointment uh will be made uh for uh the remainder of, of Ann's term, which will be ending uh next year. Uh, we're still uh exploring that. Hopefully, one of the, one of the nominees will, will uh jump in and, and take that spot, but.
No, it's three. That's what he's saying. We're trying to fill that third one.
Correct, yeah.
Are we, do we decide whether we're voting on a slate or individually? Do we ever decide that?
I, I would, I would recommend voting on them as a slate.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be individually.
If, if y'all, if y'all wanna vote on them individually, that's fine as well.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with, we're, we're straight, this is kind of a personnel. Is this, does that mean we can talk about an executive session about the interviews? We're still streaming or is this how like, here's the slate, this is what we're doing?
I would recommend if you, if you want to continue to have discussion about the nominees, that probably uh. Refer that back to the committee if you're not comfortable with them, cause I, I'm not.
No, I'm just asking a logistics question.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I would not recommend getting an in-depth discussion about the, the resumes of the nominees at this, at, in, in the public meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so do we need to vote on that, those two? And then we're still looking for the third?
Yeah. The, the, the third, the third is being nominated by the mayor.
Okay.
The last email that we had um said that we were gonna vote individually, like we weren't.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine. That's, that's entirely up to y'all.
Okay. So we are calling a vote per nominee. So for the first one, for Mr. Alexander, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye as well. Any opposed? Okay. Unanimous. And then Mr. Ethan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no. Any abstentions? Okay. So we have five yays and one abstent, two abstentions or one abstention, one no, sorry. Got it? Okay. And that is our official business for this evening. I believe we have one last item on our agenda. We would like to recognize Ms. Ann Tucker for her long-term service to this commission.
Thank you very much. Oh, hit to keep it?
You get to keep it, yes.
Thank you very much. It has been my pleasure to serve with every one of you. Thank you very much and I look forward to working with you through the council. So, thank you very much. Pardon?
I'm gonna write, wave the three ratings on everything, though.
You know, Ms. Ann, only certain people get called up to the big leagues.
Oh, well.
True talent right there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I've enjoyed it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
That concludes our meeting. If anyone else has any further business, we will adjourn.
Can we get a picture? Can we get a group picture before anybody?
So moved.